United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
In fact, you may be seated. Roll call the members, please.
Mr. Jeter, District One. Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Herron, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Addington at large.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. With that, we need to approve the agenda. Do we have a motion to do so? Is there any minutes to the agenda, Ms. Lawrence?
I don't have any.
All right, we need to approve the agenda as presented to you. Do we have a motion to do so?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Herron.
Ms. Hood made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carried. Next item is approve the minutes from March first, two thousand twenty-three. Do we have a motion? Hope everybody had a chance to look at the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes as presented to you?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Herron made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Addington, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, motion carried. All things taken. Mr. Tipton, same. But that next item is citizen's expression period. I'll read this short statement. Citizen's expression period is upon the meetings and anyone who wishes to address the board or staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from, in the county and or what organization you represent. The board may or may not respond to anything you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, ask anyone, Ms. Lawrence.
They have not.
We have no particular order. We just ask that you take turns and speak your business. Any action will be considered to be closed citizen's expression. So with that, we'll open the citizen's expression period. We do have several things on the agenda. If you're not on the agenda, you may come and speak if you would. Yes, ma'am.
I hate to be third time's out, but I've got to go fix things like your fault.
Okay. Let's see this morning.
Well, we're back.
Well, it's night tonight with the record, so.
I figured you might know.
Oh, we did, but.
I'm Hanky Koss and I'm representing Snowflake Road. And good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And I'm talking about the road conditions on Snowflake Road. Since the last meeting, we have cut more gravel and degraded it. But, only thing is, when you live on a dirt road, they graded it, put gravel, but you're still on a dirt road, you've got speed bumps, holes, dirt, dust, mud. and I know you guys all know what we're dealing with.
Mm-hmm.
And, and I guess y'all haven't heard anything on the seven billion dollar for roads and repair of bridges? Then I got, we got a letter from Warner.
We, we heard at Lynn Whisco meeting Monday night. That came down from the federal government. When Warner and Kane sent it out, they were only going to take about fifteen projects across the nation, if I'm correct. And they got forty signed. So that was, they really made a mistake in putting that out.
So not in?
I'd say there won't be much in Virginia. Am I correct, Marshall?
I think you are.
So that money is worse than winning the lottery.
Okay. And I haven't called Kilbo's office since the last meeting. I've been busy, but I'll kind of get back on that. And I guess we're coming to make sure that we did on that six-year plan. Jeremy? I'm not only asking Jeremy, I'm asking all of you. Make sure that Snowflake Road is put on the six-year plan.
All three point one miles, I think that's what it is. At least three miles, right? It's not the same.
Yeah.
There's like seventeen or eighteen houses on it.
Yeah. And, well, I thank you all for anything that you can do to help us. And we'll see you next month.
And bye.
And I've always heard, you know, that the greasy wheel gets the grease. Well, this wheel is squeaky.
No way. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to speak? Good morning.
Hello. My name is Morgan Eastep. I am a member of New Hurland Baptist Church and I live in Hiltons, Virginia. And today I'm here also about our church road. It is in very rough condition. That's road number six ninety-four in its New Hurland church lane. It's roughly half a mile. And there is very, very large potholes. It's impossible to miss them. We have had to ask for gravel multiple times throughout the year with VDOT. So I've been in contact with them multiple times. And, and we have to, we had asked for a repair last year where it was kind of eroding away and I did come out and fix that. But we do hold multiple revivals throughout the year. We just built a new sanctuary that holds roughly a hundred and fifty people. And, and we do have out-of-town visitors coming to those revivals. So it is a little bit embarrassing when you have to apologize for the road condition to them. But I am here just to request for the road be submitted on the VDOT Royal Rustic Road Project List, which I know can take some time, so. But that's really all I had.
So that was six ninety-four, did you say?
Yeah, road number six ninety-four in its New Hurland church lane in Hiltons, Virginia.
Okay. I spelled Hurland.
It's H-U-R-L-A-N-D.
And that's what, about a half a mile?
Yeah. There are a few residents that live on that road as well, but it's, we do meet three times morning and night on Sundays and then on Wednesdays for church.
All right. Let me do some help with it.
Okay.
Thank you for having me. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Morning, all.
Good morning.
My name is Gary Baker and I've got some pictures of our roads up here in Marshall Potcham around there. The reason I'm here today is I live in Volkerston, District Two, Boosie Creek Section, Clark's precinct. Our roads up there are a total disaster. I've had two of the supervisors up there two years ago and now they're even worse. All the tiles are stopped up, all the ditches are stopped up. four of the ditches are stopped up. It's even a caving in the roads, up under the roads. And the people just want me to come down here and see the few fellows to get Sally to write the governor maybe every week and get them turned around and back. I thought he was, when we elected him, he was going to help us. But evidently not. Whoever owns that Virginia Department of Taxation up there in Richmond needs to come down here and look at our situation. Now, we've even got one section of that Boosie Creek Road that the mountain is falling off and we've showed it to both supervisors. And if it falls off, that whole road's going to be closed off. And I don't know what they want to do then. And the trees that it's failed, VDOT has just cut the limbs of all the roads and just left them alone. Well, how do they expect the people, the Bushhogs, that comes along and cutting off the roads? How are they going to cut off the roads with all that mess laying there? If you fellers can get VDOT to bring a road director, we'll clean that mess out ourselves and all the tiles. But I don't know what else to do but come to board you all. And people have written to governor and everything else that maybe Sally can call them and get something done for us. Hopefully. But that's all I've got to say and y'all can look at the pictures there and I don't know what else to tell you, but we appreciate any help that you all can give us. How's Martha? I can't get a hold of her.
The last I heard, she was with her son.
Doing pretty good?
Yeah.
I can't hear a good sound. I'm sorry. But anyway, I've been trying to get a hold of her, can't get a hold of her. But if you all can help us, we sure appreciate it. And anytime you all want to come up and start hollering at me, I'd be glad to show you what I'm talking about if these pictures can't tell you what it is. Thank you all.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone else? With that, we'll come out of citizen's expression period and any comments here from the board on what you've heard here this morning?
What's the road name of the pictures? Are they all in my notes?
What road, what is that road name?
Boosie Creek Road, Federal Road, and and Bristol Highway. They've all got, Bristol Highway is basically got trees laid across on the sides of the road that needs to be cut out, pulled out, or whatever. Maybe they need to hire more people from VDOT and start getting back and still talk about it. I forgot to say that.
Thank you, Gary. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I have contacted VDOT and I think you and I probably had a discussion about that. And so they are fully aware of it. So whatever we can do is light it, light, you know, some fire under them. I mean, that's what we need to do. Really, he's not really exaggerating. The roads are of a good shape and there's many of them, you know, that, that way, not just there. AP Carter Highway, Amy, they're all the time. I think I drive that road.
They roll roads.
Yeah, it is. It is.
One thing that Jeremy or Mr. Herron here has talked about a lot is when they, they took away the crew from Nicholsville, they got all centralized. You know, when I worked for the state, we got paid for travel time. Their travel time is a lot now from where they're located to get in the far reaches of the county. That takes away from their work time, plus they're shorthanded. And so hopefully, I don't know if they ever get something back in Nicholsville, but that travel time, I mean, you're talking about an hour probably, you know. So you're talking about two hours each way, time you get there and back and then, you know, so they're limited on how much time they have to even do the work. And so I don't know what the actual that is, but hopefully they could maybe get more people or allow them to work longer hours than today and then give them more work time because that is an issue. Where they're located, it takes a long time to tram equipment and stuff from there to wherever they want to go in the county. They are centrally located, I think, where the Fort Blackmore headquarters are, but I think that's an issue where they, they have so much travel time to get back and forth where they, where they need to be working. There's issues everywhere. It's not just unique to that road and Snowflake Road, you heard Peggy talk about it. And so I don't, it's an issue that's ongoing and hopefully that somewhere along the way that they will be able to do more than what they're doing. So anyone else have any comments or?
I think, am I correct, you did a lot of work orders up in that area?
We did. We did last year with Gary.
I did. You did.
I went up there and we took a lot. I took pictures and we submitted work orders and.
Right. And followed up.
I mean, that's all we can do, really. I mean, in that respect. I mean, we can call and we put those work orders in and I took pictures for you.
County attorney, let her write them every week and get on. And maybe Youngton will order them, big department of taxation, to do something. That's our only job.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will say, but thank you all for coming. And like I said, it's an issue every, every month we have and, and I, and I get it, I do. And I know it's to try to, you know, over two hundred and fifty miles of unpaid roads and you go anywhere in the county and see the same thing.
Yeah.
I know one place that the drain pipe has actually collapsed. It's dropped this far, been like that for three years. And you go across it, you go, it's about stopped. And both ends of the pavement is caved in with the drain pipe and it's been like that for three years. And so I don't know. It's, it's amazing how that they, they're, I don't know, the funding, I guess, is where it's all at, but hopefully something will happen with this. I do appreciate you coming. We need to hear about it and we'll do what we can to see if we can.
Gary, you have no comment? You have another comment?
I'm Charles Taylor. I live District Two, that one twenty-four twenty eighth Bristol Highway. And from Slade Road and from this side, a Portent Town Road, Highway, Bristol Highway. I'm going to hit you by the pit. Right now, the road, when the lead gets on, you can't, you can't see none of the signs. You can't see nothing. The road signs would have cut off and burst or burst inside of your car. Last summer, I was in my mailbox, cutting some limbs off so my neighbor could see. To get out, go out the highway before we want to get hit. Two VDOT guys come home in a pickup, one of them had D half. I told them, what is going on? They said, we got a new tractor. When the lead gets off, we're going to come through here and cut this brush back. And I seen a tractor here. And the last contract they had, I mean, it was a fork excuse. He'd work a day and be down two weeks. Last time I had, he couldn't get a hydraulic hose for that machine. Ain't no sense in that down there. But we're that new tractor that they got. Because that, you can't hardly dump down that highway for brushing. All things you don't do, that we can get up and down through there is trucks and off the limbs back and that's how bad it is. So anything y'all could do to help us, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Highway four, fifty-eight four twenty-one is US Highway. That's a change, which is different. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. All right, next, any more comments here from anyone?
You know, maybe we do need to send another letter. I know we've sent, what, three, two or three? But invite them down here to look at these roads and take them and let them butt their heads on the ceiling as they're going down the road and they hit a ditch that's you know, I have a three-quarter ton truck and I, there's road, there's ditches on probably all these roads, but I know Snowflake Gate, the Gate Road, that my truck bottoms out. You know, there's people on that road that have small vehicles, you know. I don't see how they even get over some of them. But maybe we could invite them down here, let them look. Funding, that's where it's at. It needs to change.
Thank you. Anyone else? Our next item on the agenda is item seven. Twin Springs FCC LA Leadership Group is here. We all just got here. You all from Twin Springs, I'm assuming? All right. So Ms. Addington, I think, is she with you all?
Yes.
Okay. You want to come and, and talk with us? You can bring some of the kids with if you want, so. It's always good to have you.
Good morning, board. I'm Ms. Addington. I teach FACS classes at Twin Springs. I have a leadership class that has a presentation they want to present. It's on tourism. It's what teens want and wish for Scott County to help them kids. So I'll let them speak for themselves. But thank you for allowing us to come.
Thank you for coming.
Yes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Y'all got a lot of fun today?
Yeah.
It feel good?
Yeah.
Thank you. I love seeing this. I love seeing this.
Got my time.
Getting involved, I think that's the most important thing.
Future Scott County.
Yeah, future Scott County, right here.
Uh, yeah, just click that.
Just click it, okay.
Should work. Or not.
There you go.
And we learned this stuff from you all. She's all up on the board. That's all we can do.
Good morning. I'm Margaret Webb.
I'm Mary Pasquale.
And I'm Kayla Hill.
And we are going to present you guys on our tourism project and I hope you guys will like it.
Tourism in Scott County, Virginia. We have restaurants, consignment stores, parks, small club and stores, small art spots, and zoos.
Why what we have is not enough? What do all of those things have in common? They're all mostly family-related. Nothing in Scott County is just really for teenagers and young adults. We can only go to the zoo so many times. Eventually swimming in the same water spot gets old. Our families and friends are all the way to Johnson City, Kingsport, and Bristol just to have a fun time or eat at a certain restaurant. We need something closer and available for us to have easy access.
Have you considered how teenagers feel? We have taken it upon ourselves to survey teenagers from our county high schools about what they would like to have in Scott County for recreational activities. During your planning of tourism for Scott County, did you ask our county teams what they would like to have? Because growing up is love.
We need something to entertain ourselves. We are blessed with minds that let us use our imaginations to engage us. But now everything has changed. We need fun activities in our county to keep us interested in helping us grow, socialize with others, and stay in Scott County.
Let us help you. Our group has worked together in research on our project to locate county-owned properties. Contacted Commissioner Revenue, Economic Development, and Tourism.
Would this be the opportunity? We discovered that the Riverside property is owned by Scott County. The teenagers are asking for a theater, arcade, bowling alley, and a roller skate rink. With big consideration, you can make our dreams come true. Riverside property. We found out that there is a lien on the building. Could the, could the funding from the casino help?
Are there other properties that could be used?
Are there other properties that could be used? So could the funding from the casino help?
Well, from what I understand about the casino funding, we can, we can spend money on emergency services, transportation, and education.
Public safety.
Okay, public safety. There'd probably be some limits on that, but maybe that could loosen up some money in our budget that we may be able to, that's just something we've got to look at, you know. The casino money's new, of course, would not receive any yet, so that, we do have a committee that'll be looking at all that.
And I know that there's grants as well for individual and businesses, so we could probably talk to John Kilgore about that and we could meet up with him or something if you guys do.
John, John is here. And Pam Cox from Tourism, she's here.
We mean something to Scott County. There may be obstacles to overcome, but we are still going to pursue our dreams. We want you to take our dreams into consideration. Us teenagers, we mean something because we are the future. We are all positive. All teens here in Scott County are wanting the same thing, jobs. Teenagers need jobs. We can bring jobs in from this and make a huge profit. Do you guys agree with us?
Oh, we do. I do. Absolutely.
For sure.
What do we want? We've looked through sixty-eight responses from the survey we sent out to Twin Springs, Rockcove, and Gay City High and Middle School FDCS classes. We have them for you to review, which is why it's in those pamphlets. And as you look over those responses, you can easily determine that we want the same thing. We provided pictures of how we can render Riverside Building into a big arcade.
This is John Kilgore's plan for the plot of the ramp. We've contacted him already and he has told us to give you other ideas for tourism. This is an aerial picture of the Riverside property. We were unable to receive blueprints or we would have interior designs of this building.
Bowling alley with the arcade. Eight bowling lanes, fifteen and twenty arcade games.
One right of the, one scary ramp.
Four theater rooms, thirty seats in each room.
This is what our vision is. Help us watch it come true. Thank you for your time and consideration.
We'll answer all questions as we know.
You all got your act together on this, don't you?
Yes.
I'm impressed. I really am. You know, you all done your research. So you're not shooting from the hip. Y'all take names and I like what you're saying here.
So you've talked to John Kilgore about what the the building can be used for?
Um, yeah.
So we, John, can we use that for this? I mean, potentially, maybe? I mean, do you want to?
Actually, and, you know, she said, that's my plan. That's not my plan. That is the developer's plan that she had for a picture. So we're working with a developer, a housing developer on the, on the property. If you look at the building, the buildings, we asked, there's a lien on the building and we owe about two point two million dollars on the building. The value of that building, though, you've got to look at the value in today's dollars, it's about two hundred and twenty dollars a square foot. You're looking probably five, six million dollars is the value of that building. Now, the, the building was built for job creation and for investment. And we had a company that was in there for over five years. And when COVID hit, then they moved out and never came back. But some of those people were at home. A lot of them went to work from, from home. So that was designed as a technology building. So all of your infrastructure, your wiring and everything is in a raised floor like you would have done at the nine-one-one center. So that, it is a big investment. We're working with our engineer now to come up with a, a study to, to apply to DXCD to repurpose that building. So I don't know what, what they'll come up with. But our engineers want to work with us on repurposing the building. We're also working with that developer. I don't know what his plans are. So he may have some different plans about the Riverside property as well. So we are working. That's not the only property, you know, that Scott County owns either. So we have property in that building as well. But all of the property that they've not done before that we've worked with, we've utilized and got grant loans to create jobs for you all for the future of the county. So we've been fortunate, had a lot of expansions with temper heating, temper ceiling now, with VFD, with Komatsu, and expansions. So that's the same thing that this part was built for with initial investment that the county made of two million dollars. We've been able to get another five million dollars in grant funds and then this loan on the building as well. So that's a large investment for the county. So something to think about. I appreciate you all though, coming and talking. And we need more student involvement. And I think that as you all look to the next years, I know some of you all are running. It may be great to have a plan and include students in that plan and come up with a strategic plan for the county. Not, you know, not just eating out on tourism, include everything in that. We did that a few years ago, or it's been longer than that, it's been fifteen years ago, probably. We need to do it again. Y'all have any questions?
Something, John, that, that might help is, you know, the county owns different properties throughout the county. I mean, not, not only buildings, but vacant lots and stuff like that. You know, maybe for them or if you do get a group together, if you had those listed and maybe where they would know where they're at and what they would be suitable for and things like that.
And remember, the school owns property too.
Right, right.
It's all county. It's not just you, you all. It's the board of supervisors and the school board. They all, they all own property.
So the, your all's presentation would be good for the school.
Absolutely. That's what I was going to say. I would present that to your school board as well. Because that's perfect. That's great.
Yeah.
And don't quit. Don't quit.
And you know, maybe for the EDA, one of your all's meetings, you know, John is, he's sort of over the, well, he is the, he's not sort of, he is the but, but they, they, they have a committee, you know, that meets, you know, it'd be a good, good chance to let them hear what the good people in the county.
Twenty-sixth of April at six o'clock in this same room. Yeah, you're welcome.
I think your school board met last night. Did they meet the first Tuesday?
It was last night.
You need to get other representatives from the other high schools involved with you. Rockcove.
Okay.
I got another question. That, I mean, FCC LA, I, I should know what that stands for.
What does FCC LA stands for, like?
We have one of our offices.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. I was curious.
Creative, career, community. Community leaders of America.
Wow.
Perfect.
I am impressed, but I do want you all to get more involved and get, you know, you've got involved, but even in, like, in precincts. And so, but, and I agree. I mean, I hate going to, going to have to go across the state line to eat. I'd rather eat here someplace, but we don't have the, the restaurants and stuff they have when you go that way, so. But I'd like to spend my money here instead of going down there. And as, we grew up here, most of us did as teenagers.
And as, we grew up here, most of us did as teenagers, I didn't know where you're coming from. So, it's, it's an issue. Hey, um, would you like to say anything?
Well, I agree with everything that they've said. When, you all will remember when we did the visitor survey. One of the main things that they came up with was that we needed a thunderstorm day place to go. Everything is geared towards the outside. There's no place to go during the day if you're playing. And their idea is spot on. Um, you know, we had also talked to Spearhead Trails about things that we could do here that would all be inside, um, and indoor facility. So, I commend you all and I, if anyone would like to be on a tourism committee or if anyone would like to work with us on the V A two fifty project, we, we need nice, born young, bright bodies to work with. And we, we need, we need people who are enthusiastic and who want to be here and who want to stay in the county.
Yes.
And, and see and improve their county, most importantly, believe in Scott County and believe in all the great place that this is. So thank you all.
Let's give them a hand, I'll play, I'm playing. Before you, can we get the whole group, can I, if I like, yeah, maybe get a picture of the whole group. Just, if you can, head them up here and, and I'd like to get a picture of the, of the whole group.
If you want to see your presentation, look at the board supervisors on YouTube and you're on there forever.
See, I'll come on up here so we can, and I want the TV camera to see and, and Lisa and I'll get a picture of you two if you can do it from here to the one. Lisa will call it. Yeah, she needs to come, I want to get a picture too, Lisa needs to.
All right, kids, look right here.
I have to turn.
One, two, three. One more time, one, two, three. Them guys in the back are trying to hide. And you got, aren't you two the officers?
Yes.
How about so we can see your shirts? See? There you go.
They're going to competition during spring break. They're doing Focus on the Children, Virginia Beach.
That's awesome, where's that?
Um, the competition is, um, the conference is in Virginia Beach and it's our state conference. If we have a first place or a second place, they will get to go to Denver, Colorado.
What?
Um, Gate City, Middle and High School in Rockcove, we're all going, we're all competing. But honestly, we, yeah, we're looking forward to it.
Will they make this presentation there?
No, they have another one, they have Focus on the Children. They have made a, um, sensory tool for, um, people, for students when they get anxiety or depression and it's something really sweet.
Oh, my gosh.
We need that tool right now.
So you're taking your spring break and you're gonna be going and doing stuff while you're on spring break?
That's great.
We leave the thirteenth and come back on the sixteenth.
Oh, amazing.
Congratulations, all of you, thank you all for coming.
Thank you for having us.
Good job.
Could I just mention, um, thank you all for coming and what you all have done, you know, really speaks volumes as to what you want to change. Uh, and what you're asking is for fun and activities and something social and, which is really great. And, uh, and hopefully you'll take some of the ideas, you know, that, that came from some of the board members, that you can make this grow. And, uh, I think that's very healthy and thank you all very much.
And I will mention, we are all on the county website, so email us, call us, you know, we're happy to, you know, talk to you about anything, you know, any ideas you have and we're happy to bring all those up to the board as, you know, as we can because, like you all said, you are the future. And, I mean, I really appreciate your teacher too for taking this opportunity and giving you this opportunity. This is, this is great. I mean, the more involved you are, the more, you know, the more you learn, the more you know. It's just a good, it's just great, I'm just impressed.
They like it.
They've worked hard.
They have worked very hard and I've, I personally appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
And one day I want to see you all up here, if I live long, to see you sitting up here.
I do too, that's what I was gonna say. Making a difference, that's what we need to see.
Thank you.
You go back to school. All right. Any other comments about that presentation? If not, next item is item eight, Davenport Financing and Mr. Rose is here, so. Can you follow that act? Is that a hard act to follow?
It's, it's not fair, Mr. Chairman, I hate to come behind that. That's why I wear that dark suit. But, you know, I have some good news this morning and I think all of you should have copies of what I'm gonna present. Um, and I think, I don't know if it's up on the screen at all or, but long as you have it in front of you. Um, again, I'm David Rose and I am with Davenport and I've had the good fortune of my colleagues of working with your staff and your county administrator and attorney and others for many years. So, what we're gonna talk about today in front of you is what we call the twenty twenty-three radio equipment financing, the results. Um, over the last several months, actually going back over a year now or so, I've had the good fortune of being in front of all of you talking about various county needs and requirements, things that you basically have no control over but are required to do such as the radio program. So, here on page one of the background, uh, we take a look at and have worked with you for years on your overall county needs and how to make sure those are done responsibly and the costs we recognize are significant. Back in the beginning of this year, uh, we identified, working with your staff, the E nine-one-one radio equipment and we were then given, uh, the directive by you through, uh, county administrator uh, to go out and look at funding options and see what we could procure. Uh, when we did that back in March the thirtieth, uh, we received six different proposals that were coming from the rise of bank lenders throughout the country. And I'll get into that in a moment. But I think the important takeaway here is that in spite of all the things going on in the economy, inflation, uncertainty, what have you, um, when you get six different proposals for what is a relatively modest-sized financing from a banking perspective, now from yours, not from mine, uh, that speaks volumes about the way in which your finances are being managed. So I think that's very, very important. Um, I can recall not many years ago when we would be lucky to get one or two responses to things that we were looking for and really had to do some arm twisting to get some folks to, to say we'd like to. But you have done a very good job, particularly under your administrator, of adding to your fund balances and adding to the overall strength of the county. It's a never-ending struggle, I realize that, uh, but that's been very much what's happened. So you go to page two, um, one of the things we did ask for was to get a fixed rate for basically ten years. Um, you'll see on the left-hand side, I go back to when I started, basically right after nineteen eighty-eighty-one timeframe, some forty-plus years ago. Interest rates were up towards fifteen percent, that was for fixed rates. Um, today, um, they're closer to four to five percent. Um, and that is very, very strong. Again, not where we were a year and a half ago at two percent or thereabouts, but still, by historical standards, over forty-plus years, really quite good. And I think that's important, um, as we look at our. So if you go to page three, these results, what we asked for was up to one point six million dollars that we cover the radio equipment, other costs, and we worked with bond counsel, Sam Zanderson, some of those folks have been here before, we recognize them. Um, and we basically did a planning estimate back at five percent. So that was our goal, was to be under five percent. And you're gonna see in a couple of moments, we're considerably under five percent. And again, that speaks to, uh, not only, uh, your strength but also competitiveness that was created by actually putting out bids like this. So we ended up with two banks that we want to talk to you about today. Uh, Bank of America, which again, you don't get any bigger than that, and Pal Valley here in the area, a very, very solid bank you do a lot with. And we asked them both if they would give us their fixed rates. So on page four, we ended up looking at the two of them. And the Bank of America rate was fixed for ten years at a little over three point three percent. Again, we use five percent as our benchmark. We were really hoping to be in the low fours. As a result, both Bank of America and Pal Valley are under four percent. And I'd point out that this rate, these rates, I should say, are locked in through the closing. So even if markets move, and they have moved, uh, we're set with both of them. Now, one of the things I would point out is that when we looked at both Bank of America and Pal Valley, they were anywhere between a hundred and fifty thousand and two hundred thousand dollars less than what we had estimated over time. So that put us in a good mood. Candidly, uh, Bank of America was the lowest. It was some twenty thousand dollars per year lower than the estimates than we had talked about with the starts. Uh, at the end of the day, one last point here, the reason your resolution is broad is we do not have the final credit approval from Bank of America. And if for some reason we do not get that, we think we will, but if we don't, then we are able to move into, uh, the financing with Pal Valley. Still lower than the estimate, but not by as much. So, our goal, and frankly, I would talk to Pal Valley if that's the case, to see if we could get that rate knocked a little bit down. Can't, I can't assume we would, uh, but nevertheless, uh, it can't hurt to ask if we have to do that. So with that said, on page five, um, we're recommending that you approve the resolution, Mr. Chairman, or the board, today. That will allow both the banks to know that, again, we are moving forward. Uh, it will also allow, uh, the folks that are putting all the documentation together to effect dot the i's, cross the t's, what have you, because we're gonna show you in a moment what we're thinking about after close on the, on the loan here. Um, the important thing about this, I said interest rates are very good, but both of these banks provide us with the ability to prepay the loan if we want, very flexibly prepay it for whatever reason. And we've had that in the past when I've been in front of you, we've exercised that for any number of reasons. Mr. Kilgore's here today, he knows that sometimes it's not about interest rates, it's about moving and changing purposes for the loan or what have you. So again, this is set up to be flexible, um, and we can prepay it early. Uh, but nevertheless, um, we wanted to make sure you realize we have that ability. So on page six, the last page here, uh, today, April fifth, uh, will I ask that you, uh, agree with the recommendation of the staff of bond counsel ourselves and we approve the resolution for the financing. Uh, there is nothing necessary, uh, through the economic development folks, the way this is set up, this would be the only action that's necessary. Um, we are looking at, uh, closing, uh, hopefully prior to May tenth. Uh, we know you've got your next meeting on May third, I have that there as a placeholder. If for some reason we have to come back, hopefully not, uh, it's at least there, just so you know. But the goal is to have this closed in the next thirty to forty days. Um, and again, it's been reviewed and approved, uh, by bond counsel, Bishop and myself and my colleagues. So, uh, again, we've done this with you before. Um, county is in better shape financially than it's been, uh, and I'm happy to see that. But once again, um, there's never any process, so. That's really all I have to say. Um, happy to answer any questions, uh, appreciate the opportunity to hear some of that.
I like the comments that where we are financially, uh, a good presentation. And I'm surprised those interest rates are below five, I really am. So I appreciate that. Uh, so anyway, any comments or questions from any of you all? And this will be finalized May the tenth, I think, as you said, it should be, it should be. This resolution, I said, it's in the pack, okay. Anyway, I, I seen the res, yeah, here it is. And hopefully it's, it's quite a bit of it, and I went through it, looked at it, and hope you all have too. So, uh, and it's in the pack, I thought, well, I had it somewhere, I couldn't find it, Ms. Lawrence, getting her copy. Anyway, this resolution needs to be done, we can just financing to take place, we can offer out this resolution, uh, as, as presented, as you should have a copy of. So any comments or questions about this?
And authorization for me to sign.
Authorization, okay, and authorization for Ms. Lawrence to sign all the documents. Can we include that in the resolution when we vote to do it all at one time? Do it all at once.
It is probably included in the resolution.
All righty, so with that, we'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution to, to proceed with this and allow Ms. Lawrence to sign all necessary documents. So do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right, Mr. Brick has made a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton's second, any discussion?
I just, this is a great move, you know, it's been talked about, discussed, you know, from, we could go from the analog to, uh, communication. And I'm sure our services, uh, police and rescue EMS and all of that are looking forward to, um, this happening, so.
Yes.
Uh, a long time needed, so, great, great deal.
Are we having a motion, second, I'll prepare what we say now? Uh, opposed?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I think we should take a roll call vote, because a lot of town, this is a better approach for bond counsel, so.
All right. I'll have Ms. Lawrence, I'll have Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Jeter, Mr. Tipton?
Yes.
Mr. Haron?
Yes.
Mr. Bricky?
Yes.
Mr. Mann?
Yes.
Ms. Hood?
Yes.
And Ms. Eddington?
Yes.
All right, so.
Thanks.
Hopefully I will not sue you on May the third.
Hope not. I was gonna say, but hopefully it won't happen, all right. All right, next item is Spearhead Trails, uh, Mr. Steve Pike. Welcome to Scott County from Richmond, sir.
Yes, sir.
Put your act to work if you got to have it.
Absolutely. Uh, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, my name is Steve Pike. And, uh, I started back the last week of, uh, February, the interim director of Spearhead Trails. And I just want to take opportunity to come by and introduce myself to you all. And I also would like to invite you all up next Wednesday, April twelve, to our thunderstruck property there at the High Mall. Uh, I'd like to take that opportunity for you all to come up and take a look at the trail system up there. We'll provide some lunch for you all and, and, uh, that property, working with the landowner, um, has really turned out to be a great asset for horseback riding, hiking, uh, as you all know, I'm sure you've been up there too, it's, it's a great piece of property. One of the other things I wanted to mention to you, in the, last week I found out that, uh, we are likely to receive some funding through a grant to help us create a strategic plan for Spearhead Trails. And would like to, uh, have the opportunity to speak with our stakeholders here in Scott County and the other counties in the authority to get your all's feedback, um, to kind of see where your thoughts are and others here in the county with, with Spearhead Trails and some ability to see that grow. We're also looking at some opportunities with some marketing, uh, opportunities through Virginia Tourism as well. So, um, again, I know your all's schedule will afford you all to be up, April to come up April twelfth, eleven o'clock.
I was gonna say, what time?
Yes, eleven o'clock, uh, and, uh, spend some time up there showing you the, the property as well. So, uh, happy to be, uh, away from Richmond and down here in Scott County and look forward to working with you all in, in the coming weeks.
It's eleven AM, I, I've got three things that day, so I hope somebody can go. I've done a phone and I've got a four o'clock meeting. I've done a phone and talk, and we got a 4:00 meeting that day. So hopefully some of y'all can go to that. I would, three other things that day.
Sure.
Anyway, so if you can go and be a part of that. If you've not been up there, just go look at it, it's beautiful. And what they've done at Thirmy, that's going to be a good deal for Scott County.
So where perhaps on this meeting will we?
So we'll start the parking lot there at the top, and from the High Knob there to.
So around 6:09, take us to Fort Blackhorn, the mountain. You can't miss it, once you get up there.
I know, you're talking about the host of a lookout.
Yeah. All right. All right. Thank you, sir, appreciate you coming, Mr. Brick. Next item is Kim Davis and Carrie Beck is here, friends of Southwest Virginia, so if you would.
Good morning, good morning. Just working my presentation, I give you the, pardon, no, copy. Oh, I'm sorry, a copy of the presentation. Let me just give it to you. Oh, the one on the other side, the other side. Sorry. I've been looking that way the whole time, did you? Thank you. I'll give you two days.
Well, thank you all so much for the opportunity to come in front of you all today. It is very much an honor, and I'm really glad that Mr. Pike came from the Spirithead Trails and had the opportunity to meet with him. And I think he shared that he actually is building a house here in Scott County, and I think he's going to be a great leader for our region as well. So it's good to see him. I am Kim Davis, the executive director for Friends of Southwest Virginia. And we are the regional community development and destination marketing organization for the complete Southwest Virginia. I don't think we've, our organization has come and talked to you all in a while, so I thought it'd be a good idea to thank you, so Frida, who, as we talked about it, to kind of give you a little bit of update on Friends of Southwest Virginia, or even what is Friends of Southwest Virginia, and also give you an update on Round the Mountain Artisan Trail, and then Carrie Beck, my colleague from the Crooked Road. Going to give you a couple of updates on what's going on with the Crooked Road. So we'll get in here, this will be pretty brief. Let us will give you a little bit of background around Friends, what makes up our region, our focus areas, and our future. So we're going to go through this pretty quickly. At any point you get any questions, just let me know. If you see this logo, this is the full regional brand that is, that promotes all of Southwest Virginia. That includes the areas, that's the brand that we oversee at Friends of Southwest Virginia. We were founded in 2010, we're a nonprofit organization, and we really focus on the creative economy. And people ask, what, you know, exactly what is the creative economy? It is taking our natural and heritage assets and turning them into economic development. So a lot of the projects I'm going to share with you that we're doing and we're looking at are all around the creative economy, taking our natural and our cultural assets and creating economic development. This is the full region of Southwest Virginia that our organization covers. We go all the way from Lee County, all the way almost up to, we don't have Brunnell County, but we do have Franklin County right underneath. It's 19 counties, four cities, and a total of 53 towns. We really focus on downtown revitalization, crafts, artisan, and outdoor rep. We also, as we talked about, have the creative economy that we really focus on, and it's just an element of our agriculture, our manufacturing, our traditional industry, and our small business. We really focus on, I always say, pretty much four main areas. This will include community development, regional marketing. We also have the Hartwood Building, which is Southwest Virginia Cultural Center. And we also do Round the Mountain Artisans, and we work with Carrie for Crooked Road. Our community development efforts, we really look at those in like three different veins. One is actually where we look at how do we facilitate bringing groups together, talking together, and working together. We also look at doing infrastructure projects as well as planning projects. Some of our planning projects that we've recently done, we are working on a plan for Lee and Wise County, it's a boat launch on the Powell River, as well as potentially a pump track in Big Stone Gap, that's a bike and skate park. We are looking at doing a, we finished studying the Cumberland Plateau. We also finished a study on the Mount Rogers region. And last year, we completed two studies with Virginia Cooper Trail. As you know, that's like one of the trails over in Washington County, and how does it sustain? We look at like, it's a great trail, but like, it's not, how do we sustain it? If you have to take down a trestle, how do you maintain a trail, things like that? And then the Dodo Trail, of course, and the High Knob Master Plan. We'll tell you that we do have a grant application in right now to do a planning grant for the Lenoisco region. We know we've done the High Knob area, we've looked at that a lot, but we really haven't looked down into Scott County and Lee Counties as in depth for outdoor recreation. I think this is key, and I don't want to get this lost, because there is so much money right now in multi-state projects and things like that. So we need to really identify what we need in Scott County, what we need in Lee County, and obviously Wise, to really look at what we need and how we can connect with projects in Tennessee and Kentucky and really go after some major dollars. We also have the Cumberland Plateau study that we've released that we are excited about, really tells a lot about what outdoor recreation is in that part of the region. We also are fiscal agents a lot of times for a lot of infrastructure projects. So we were the fiscal agent and the group that led the Damascus Trail Center project over in Damascus, the Devil's Backtub project, the parking lot project, Inside River Walk, as well as the High Knob Destination Center that's ongoing, High Knob Lake, and these other ones that you can see up there. I will say that when we opened, we did the opening of the parking lot of Devil's Backtub in 2020, and we have been excited to see how that project is going, as well as we're overseeing, we're fiscal agent, and kind of the person in charge of all the reporting for the High Knob Destination Center as well, over in Norton. And that should be, it's going up fast. That was, picture was taken Monday, I think, and it's going pretty well. I think that'll be a good draw. We also handle the regional marketing. We do work really well with Heart of Appalachia, who also does this area of the region as well. We do branding and marketing. We also do a program that partners can buy into, and they can do a lot of marketing for a lot less cost than if they went out and did it themselves. We also have a digital management system where you or anybody can have access to a lot of photography and videography of the region. And we also do a lot of community visits. This is the brand that we promote and that we try to get people to come with. This is the marketing access program we talked about, where a lot of communities will come and say, hey, we need videography, we need photography, we need a website. And we can do that for a lot less cost than, so we work with a lot of different groups to do those things, as well as this is the digital management system that folks can get great photography of the region. So if you're looking to put together an economic development report or any type of like, any type of strategy at all, you can do that. Our visitor facing website is visitswva.org. And we get visitors, this is kind of where a lot of visitors, when they're starting to plan their trip to Virginia, they'll see Visit Virginia, Virginia's for lovers, then they'll come into the regional site, and then they'll really drive into which part of the region they want to go to. We also host the Southwest Virginia Tourism Awards last year in Withful. This is our first year, and we really honor a lot of work that was going on throughout the region. Finally, this is kind of where you can find us on our social channels, as well as we also run the Cultural Center, which is the Hartwood Building, all of you all know. This opened in 2011, and I'll tell you that since coming out of COVID, our visitation, we are up. And as of Monday, we opened back to seven days a week. We haven't been able, we were six days a week, we haven't been able to be seven days because of staffing, we're finally there, so fingers crossed everything's going good. But things at the Cultural Center are doing really well. Also, I want to give you a quick update on Round the Mountain. This is our artisan network, which began in 2005. We currently have run around 189 members, and 158 of those, what we call their jury, that means they can sell their things at the building. We also have four members from Scott County that is in that. These are some of the work that they do, so if you're ever looking for a really unique regional gift, corporate gift or whatever, this is a good way, you can go onto our website, and we've got around 2,000 products on the side that we can mail it to you. And a lot of, we do a lot of artisan events that feature that, kind of our future. We are right in the middle of doing a pretty extensive Southwest Virginia regional marketing campaign. This was funds that we received from the Tobacco Commission. So we'll be looking at key areas we want to promote throughout the region. We're also looking at several development projects. What is on the, what's the future, like what do we need to be going for? And then, of course, this expansion around the mountain. You'll see in the guide I gave you is our annual report for all three organizations. It gives you a little bit of update. And that is all I have. Any questions for Friends before I turn it to Carrie?
Anyone?
I talked fast, but I wanted to be, I wanted to be very mindful of your time, so.
Good job, good presentation.
Thank you, and also thank you for your continued support of our organization. Thank you.
See if I can talk fast. I'm Carrie Beck, I'm the executive director of the Crooked Road. I've been there since 2020, right during the pandemic, so that was an interesting time for us. But we were able to kind of consolidate and run really frugally during 2020 and 2021. Last year, we did add one additional full-time staff member, so there's two of us. The Crooked Road covers the same region that Kim outlined in Friends of Southwest Virginia, so the 19 counties and the four cities and all the towns in Southwest Virginia. Our board leadership is from all over the region. Dylan Locke is our president right now, Leah, and then we have Leah Ross, I'm sorry, Brooklyn's and Country Music Editor Bristol. We've got members from all over the region of our Board of Directors. So counties have a place on our board and have representation on our board. And we're thankful that John is our representative, he's very active with us. I wanted to highlight this slide briefly. In 2020, we did undergo a strategic planning process during that downtime. And I want to just highlight that on that mission statement, everything that we do is trying to serve various constituencies, but ultimately, we're an organization that's supposed to affect economic development positively for our region. As Kim mentioned, the creative economy is really strong. The Crooked Road was one of the leading tourism initiatives for our region to fill the gaps where the traditional industry was waning or changing. So we are here to serve various constituencies, including our counties and our cities, our potential tourists, our musicians, and our venues. Scott County, obviously, is home to the Carter Hold, which is one of our major venues, a true jewel along the Crooked Road. As far as the mission goes, we recently had an organizational planning session with our board. We want to be a really proactive organization to make sure that we are servicing all those constituencies accurately. So this year and going forward, we're looking at doing a new strategic plan and going through a strategic planning process. We are also going to be looking at an economic impact assessment during 2024. And then we're also undergoing a website redesign, we've, or will be. We have submitted the RFP for that. So we want to make sure that outwardly facing the Crooked Road has the best image for that potential tourist as well. So we are being proactive in the management of the organization. So some marketing and projects that I wanted to highlight today. We've got this quarterly magazine that we started last July. So traditionally, the Crooked Road had one visitor guide that may be served over multiple years, but that wasn't really servicing our venues, our communities well, because everyone was adding more festivals, venues are constantly adding events. So we wanted to make sure that the potential tourist had a current guide of events that were happening. This way, all the heritage festivals that happen, or new festivals that communities are bringing on board don't get lost in the shuffle. Our major venues and affiliate venues are highlighted in all of our marketing materials, so they're in there constantly. But this magazine is printed on a quarterly basis and then mailed out to our visitor centers. We also have a tri-fold brochure that goes into the visitor centers along the highway, so we're trying to catch them, potential visitors at any intersection here. Also, we've started this month, we started this week on the Crooked Road Music Trail, this is for Facebook. So every week, we'll highlight three, about three entities. This week, we do have the Empty Bottle String Band at the Carter Hold on there, which we link back to venues and to communities. So again, that's another way that we can be really responsive on a weekly basis. We're also starting a new fiddler's convention that will be held at the break. So that's going to be in October, so it's kind of the capstone at the end of the fiddler's convention year. But that's kind of breaking news, no one has seen this logo yet, so y'all are the worst ones to do that. We do also work on traditional music, we're looking at that next generation. And as you saw earlier in this presentation, it's so important to really integrate the youth on whatever level they're interested in, we want them to stay here. So we are hosting a youth music festival next month. Last year, we reformatted it to make it into a competition so that we could give away money, and we did, we gave $1,100 in cash away. I want the youth to know that they can get paid for their craft, even if they end up working a nine-to-five or a more traditional job and then just playing music on the side. That is something they're interested in, I want to encourage that. And we partner with junior Appalachian musicians for that. We're also working on doing two junior Appalachian musicians showcases at the end of the year, which will help them, their school programs be featured and also help with their recruitment as well throughout the region. We do present heritage music both inside and outside the region. We have a Crooked Road Art Tour program that takes musicians from the area and sends them out to venues and state fairs. We do the State Fair of Virginia on a consistent basis. We also last year did a music and dance spectacular show, which highlighted old time and woodwrecks and all of our traditional dance as well. So this is a show that can be taken to bigger performing arts centers. And then also, I would love to do a tour to Ireland, or if any of y'all want to come along, get your passports. No, but I would love to do a West Coast tour or an international tour, because we do see international visitors coming to our region. That could be in the future, maybe part of the new strategic plan. We also present at Rhythm and Roots. So you know, that festival, the scope has gotten so large, we wanted to have a heritage music presence of our musicians here, so we're focusing on women-fronted bands this year. And then we've also this year started a third Thursday Cultural Series at the Cultural Center. So this is traditional dance, we have square dance, we're doing tunes of the Carter family this month, and then we also have some more dance, the contra dance, we're going to have jacktales, so storytelling and ballad singing as well, just alternate forms of our heritage. So we've also got other projects, the Artist in Residence Program, we're going into the third annual Artist in Residence, any musician from the region can apply for that. They get $500 a month stipend to be a Crooked Road ambassador and produce a special piece of music or a video for the Crooked Road to help promote the region. This is just direct support for our musicians. We also started a signature art program that we are key throughout the region as well. So this is, the mandolin was our first signature artist this year. We also have a heritage music fund, and this is available to any band or performer in the region. They can apply for up to $500 for professional projects. Again, we want them to report here, we want them to stay here. I do not want these people to move outside the region. A highlight coming up is, next year is the Crooked Road's 20th anniversary. I know a lot of y'all, being from this region, have probably seen the Crooked Road progress from early stages to what it is now. We should be very proud that this organization has 19 years under its belt, but next year will have 20. This is a milestone year, it's going to provide a banner for tourism for all of the communities. We're working on a special logo, I'm hoping to unveil that around July 1st. So that logo will be given to the communities to use in their promotion. Also, I envision window clings and signages so the businesses can be engaged as well. We're also looking at songwriting contests for this year, so we would have a new song for next year, and educational events and exhibits, as well as concert series and partner events. That would be signature events at all the major venues, and then looking at the communities, the counties, and the cities and saying, okay, what's a signature event that you want to have? How can the Crooked Road come alongside you as well? So that's all I have. I do want to say that we engage with the DMOs every six to eight weeks. I have a call for all the tourism partners, and so they will be heavily engaged as we move forward in the 20th anniversary as well. Do y'all have any questions for me?
Anyone, any comments or questions?
Great presentation. Thank you all so much. You're fine, appreciate it.
All right, a good presentation, and enjoyed very much, good information. Anything here from anyone? All right, thank you all again. Next item is item 11, the Stockholder's here, Commissioner of Revenue, so Mr. Debbie, your time, please.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
I'm doing okay, I'm Debbie Doll, Correctional and Revenue, and I'm here today to ask for an increase in the discount for the elderly and disabled. Currently, our discount is $200. And then the plus options are, your total household income cannot be more than $35,000, total assets cannot be more than $95,000, which does not include a home. And then, of course, you have, you know, must reside in the residence. I'm asking today, excuse me, to have that discount increased from $200 to $250. The total household income from $35,000 to $40,000, and the total assets from $95,000 to $100,000. I normally have been coming every three to four years to have that increase. And normally. And normally, we do it in increments of $25. But with the increase in property taxes, the cost of living, groceries, you know, everything has increased so much that I feel like, you know, a $50 increase would be good. This really does help a lot of people out. Right now, we have a total of 604 people who get the discount. Of those, 555 are real estate, and then 49 are mobile homes that are people's primary residence. 497 get the full $200 discount. And then the rest of those, they get less than a $200 discount.
So how many of the... 250, the full?
497 out of the 604 get the full $200 discount. If we done an increase of $50, right now, it would amount to $24,850. And of course, with that increase, you know, we would have a few more people that would qualify if we, you know, raised the income or limit. I just feel like, like I said, with the increase and everything, a lot of people are struggling right now to make it. And I have to say that these people that get the discount, they are usually the first ones that come in and pay their taxes. And if everybody was like that, we wouldn't have any worries here in county about the local taxes, so.
65, the elderly, 65 of them?
I'm sorry, I should have mentioned that. Yes, the qualifications are 65 years old for the elderly, and then permanent Social Security disability recipients qualify also.
All right. What the county said was cost increase would be, if we go to $24,850 to the total cost of the county.
It would be the total increase at the current number of...
That's the cost or the increase?
That's the increase. That would be the increase to the county.
Okay, what it is now. Do you know what it is now by chance?
The real estate right now, 555 real estate is $119,427.23. 49 mobile homes at $2,101.72.
You're talking about roughly $144,000, the total cost of the county, some of that about?
Yes.
And I don't obstruct folks, you know, that's to the elderly people to do that on fixed income, Social Security, and so on. I get that. Any comments here for you folks?
Well, I totally agree. I think, you know, with inflation factor, what you're talking about, and with what all that we've been through, as you've already stated, I know it's very difficult for these people to even make it. I like to point the fact that, hey, those are the first ones to get to pay their taxes, so.
And they are so grateful, you know, for, I know, you know, $200 doesn't sound like a lot to a lot of people, and it actually insults a lot of people when they call and they want to know what our discount is, and they're like, is that all? But for those that get it, who really appreciate it, it's a whole lot.
It is. You said four years ago we did this?
It was three or four years ago.
I'm like, it's more recent. Time goes by quick.
It does.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Your folks on the board. And I think we can do this. I mean, I think we should, and so it'll help the folks out there that need the works, is what we're doing, I think, so.
Good job, Debbie, for bringing this up to us. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you all. I appreciate all of you.
All right. Any comments or questions? Not entertain a motion to approve this?
It is to people for a hearing.
Public hearing, that's correct. Thank you. So we have to advertise a public hearing to do this, which would be the next meeting? Okay. Authorize Sabbath to do that, abrupt to do that, correct?
Yeah, because it's a change by order.
So I'll make a motion that we...
Authorize?
Authorize Ms. Kegley to advertise for a public hearing to increase the elderly and disabled.
You want to put through the numbers?
No, I'm not.
I could, I'm just jerking the chat. I could. I got a little down here, but I promise I get it.
Go through the... Well, you got me all.
I'm sorry.
I was on a roll there for a minute. To authorize Ms. Kegley to advertise for a public hearing to increase the disabled and elderly tax.
From 200 to 250?
Yes, from 200 to 250.
All right. You made a motion, correct?
Yes.
All right. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Higginson, second. All right, good. Ms. Higginson, any discussion? All fair and proper, send aye?
Aye.
Opposed. So we get that done, and...
Yeah, thanks for that.
Thanks for all very much.
Next item is Mosley Architects Phase Two and Phase Three.
I believe it's on your tablet. So Phase Two and Phase Three of our project scope of work with Mosley Architects is Amendment Number Three to their contract, and it's for schematic design for the 179 West Jackson Street property and existing courthouse. The total amount for both phases would be $107,137. And I need authorization to enter into an agreement with Mosley for those services and to pay for that out of the ARPA funding.
Need most to authorize Ms. Starnes to proceed with this. It would come out of the ARPA fund, so you have the amount. Do we have a motion to do so?
Still moved.
All right, Mr. Brick, you made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. So Ms. Starnes, you get your work cut out for you. Next item is the DHCD Upper Cliff Mountain Phase Two documents. And I think we'll start with what that is, but you're willing, Ms. Starnes, if you want to.
Those are documents that are on your tablet as well. These are just contract agreements with DHCD to get the Upper Cliff Mountain Phase Two project started. So just need authorization to sign. If you want to do all Cliff Mountain Phase Two documents, we can do it that way.
I guess authorize Ms. Starnes to sign those necessary documents. And so without further discussion, I think we know what this is, but we need a motion to...
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Higginson made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herron, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is to ratify the Public Service Authority PSA Letter of Support. And Ms. Starnes, again, if you would.
This is on your tablet as well. I received verbal authorization to go ahead and do the Public Service Authority Letter of Support. It was needed for a grant application for the Central Water Project earlier in the month with a deadline before today. So we just need to ratify that letter of support.
Need a motion?
Still moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brick, you second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is the Fraily Road Bridge. If you would, Ms. Starnes. I knew that you would.
You have a letter on your tablet. Mr. Sumter with VDOT has requested that you consider approval for a VDOT waiver, that the VDOT engineer can request a waiver to keep the Fraily Town Road Bridge as a one-lane bridge instead of a two-lane, which would delay the project. And we would have to do some, VDOT would have to have additional right-of-way for that bridge. So if we do a request for them to leave that as a one-lane bridge, the project is on the 2026 timeline. So that letter's just there for your consideration.
All right. Hope you had a chance to look at it. If so, we would need to approve this to allow this to be reconstructed as a one-lane bridge. Do we have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Ms. Higginson made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Our next item is Ms. Victorius, if you would. Would you be?
Please appropriate $940 to Circuit Court Clerk's Technology Trust Fund Capital Outlay Office equipment, 29-21655-8102, for monies received in deposit at the Sheriff's Office. Appropriate $1,135.98 to Circuit Court Clerk's travel training, 21600-5540, for reimbursements received. Appropriate $910 to Sheriff's Office for parent maintenance of vehicles, 31200-6009, for an insurance claim received. And appropriate $372 to registrar's postage, 13200-5210, for reimbursement received. And that's all the appropriations.
Need a motion to approve the appropriation as described, Ms. Victorius. Do we have a motion?
Still moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Higginson, second. All right. Any discussion? All fair and proper, send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
Please transfer $7,258 from E911 Central Dispatch Contracted Maintenance, 31400-3320, to repairs and maintenance supplies, 31400-6007. And transfer $600 from Commission of Revenue to online real estate records, 12310-5290, with $400 going to office supplies, 12310-6001, and $200 for postage, 12310-5210. And that's all the transfers.
What's the transfer? What was that transfer? What did that cover?
The 911.
Yes.
They're having flooring replaced.
Is that the flooring? Okay. I thought it was. I just wanted to make sure.
And then the commissioner, she was saying, just because of the cost of supplies, she needed more in her office supplies and in postage.
Okay.
For mailings.
Do you have a motion to make the transfers as described? Do we have a motion?
No, I'm not making a motion.
Mr. Herron made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Brick, you second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
And please accept Tourism's Virginia Tourism Corporation Recovery ARPA grant. And if accepted, please establish the following expense code, 72600-5637.
Do you have a motion on the grant to create that code, expense code? Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
All right. Ms. Higginson made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, ma'am. Next item is County Attorney Allen, Ms. Kegley.
I don't have anything to do.
Next item is the County Administrator Allen. We'll be playing first against Ms. Starnes.
Okay, you should have that, the green sheet in your folder. Treasuries Accountability Report, the current amount in the general fund is $12,435,124.47. If you look at your comparison chart, we are quite a bit above where we have been in the past. The school system still has a little over $5 million to pull down. So if you take that out, we're pretty much in line with where we were at this time last year. As far as your claims, in the early sets, they total $220,856.26. Some of those are, of course, normal AEP bills. We had a Calvin's Body Shop repair for the Sheriff's Office, Duffield Fire and Rescue, and Nicholsville Rescue, two payroll supports. Waste Management was $42,793.59 for the March invoice. And BACOR was $42,97.75. As far as current claims, the total is $1,173,405.40. Some of those larger ones is the regional jail. This is our fourth quarter payment, so this will be the last one this fiscal year. That totaled $723,569.97. Zetron was $133,500. That was for tower work for the new digital radio system. That's 15% of the contract execution and design review. Appalachian Juvenile Commission for the quarter was $62,527. Lonsome Pine Regional Library for the quarter, $50,762.50. And the Health Department, fourth quarter, $63,773.75. So total claims that need approved today is $1,394,261.66.
Do we have any comments or questions about the claims that we need to approve?
I'll make the motion that we pay the bills.
Ms. Higginson made a motion to pay the bills. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
You also have a yellow sheet in your folder with miscellaneous items. The first one, on the Ford Explorer purchase, we did sealed bids for those. Fairway Ford was the low bidder at a cost of $45,200. That would be paid for if approved from Local Emergency Management Planning Grant, $13,810. And Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, $31,390.
And who's that going to be used by?
That would be used by the county administrator.
All right. Any other comments or questions? Not we will entertain a motion to approve this proposal. Do we have a motion?
Still moved.
Mr. Brick, you made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Herron, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, vote with aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Next, I'm requesting to set up a fund for the animal control donations. That would be Fund Number 10. And also some new GL codes. That would be 49-11010-8102, Fund 49. Local Assistance and Tribal Consistency Fund, Capital Outlay. And 3-10-18990-0001, Fund 10, Animal Control Fund donations.
So we need to approve these new codes?
Yes.
All right. Need most to approve these new codes as described by Ms. Starnes. Do we have a motion?
No, I'm not making a motion.
All right. Ms. Herron made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
Next, we need to discuss authorization to negotiate a rental agreement for temporary office space for the Scott Service Program. I'm just asking for authorization to negotiate right now for that space. And then at the May meeting, if we can come to terms, we would have a rental agreement for you to consider at that time.
Or need a motion to authorize Ms. Starnes to negotiate this? Do we have a motion?
Still moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brick, you second. Any discussion? All fair and proper, send aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
And then one additional thing. As you know, our loader at the transfer station is going to have to have some major repairs. We have been able to locate a loader with glass machinery that they're willing to rent to us. That is at a cost of $5,500 per month. They will deliver it, and they will also change out the tires to make, like, put our tires on the loader where it would be usable for a transfer station. And I'm requesting that you approve that agreement. Ms. Kegley has reviewed the agreement. And I ask that you let us use that $5,500 from your contingency fund.
What happened? The transmission, I think, went out on the one we have. And it's about 15 years old, but anyway, it had transmission issues. I talked to Bill. He's trying to find one, and so.
Yeah, we've finally found a loader that has the same size, has the same kind of IT hooker that we could hook our bucket and packer to. Solid tires were hard to find, but what we're doing, the glass is willing to bring those up and switch out the tires. So we'll be using our tires on their... So we'll be using our tires on their loader until we get our fix. I did give word from Steller Caterpillar yesterday, their estimate that it's going to be at least a month on our loader. So this may be a two-month rental. And that's, hopefully, we can get it back within a month. But the way things go with the availability of parts, I would count on two.
All righty. So got to have one at our transfer station, which is something we have. We'll talk about funding next month, I guess, if we go past the month, we'll do that. This will come from a contingency fund. We okay in our contingency fund, sorry?
Yes, you have about $34,000.
How many hours is on that loader?
Nine thousand. We haven't had any trouble with it. It's been a really good machine. Nine thousand hours. Bought it in 2009. And it's used six days a week. And most of the time it's back and forth in the first two gears. So it's a lot wired on those gears. We may look at trying to find another used machine as a backup. So it's not so hard to find one that fits this fix and replace it. We need to work on one.
All right. We need a motion to approve this to come out of contingency funds, 5,500. And then we'll deal with it again next month if needed. So we need a motion to approve this.
Still not, Ms. Sheriff.
All right, Mr. Tipton made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brickley, second. Any discussion? All favor of the Senate, aye? Aye. Opposed, motion carried. All right, one more item. Y'all think it's about five minutes break?
Please.
Before we get into that. What, about five minutes? Might have to chop into bits to get up here, I can tell. Yeah, I said your name.
I'm toast, Sally. When you get down, I'll finish that work.
Yeah, I will do it every week.
It's scary, man.
I was talking to the doctor.
Okay, y'all must be retired by me. All right, Mike can do it.
Good morning.
Good morning.
It's difficult this morning, so bear with me. Good to be here and welcome Mr. Ricky to the PSA board.
Thank you.
Looking forward to it. Last month, yeah, we had a good time together. And they took out Darryl this morning, Mr. Jeter. He's okay. So things are a little more optimistic reported than had past several times. Things have broken loose with materials and permits and such. And we are, we have a lot going on. We have sixty million dollars, sixty million dollars in projects funded, water and sewer projects funded. So there's a lot to do and there's a lot being done. So Dan Boone Sewer is first on your list. And that highlights the problem with easements that I have talked with you before. And I, I think PSA's message is that we offer a tremendous service. Safe drinking water, safe sewage disposal, economic development. And, you know, ninety, ninety-five percent of the people that we work with are very cooperative in giving us easements. But unfortunately, there have been a few occasions where a single property owner has held up this excellent, very much needed public service of water and wastewater for several other residents. And I think it's time for the PSA to look into being bolder on obtaining these few easements. And so we are exploring what we can do. And we'll be doing that in the next month or two. Robinette Valley, you've asked me about and we're all very much interested in, should be in service by July. And Hunter's Valley West should be in service this month.
This month?
This month.
I drove through there yesterday and it's, or Monday, I guess it was, I seen what all that had been done. I'm surprised how much they moved since last time I went through there.
Their crew did that. Their crew did a great job. They're waiting on the road board, Creek Board actually under Big Stone to actually connect the water so it can have a water supply. And they've indicated that that contractor is going to do that this month. So it, it all hinges on that.
Can you let us know when that occurs? Can you send us out an email and let us know when that, when this bounty creek?
Hunter's Valley.
Yeah, Hunter's Valley.
I, I can.
Let me know when that, when that gets tied and tied in and then turned off would be great. Have a lot of folks curious about that.
We'll send out a notice to the customers when it's time for them to do their paperwork. And get their PSA account set up.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know they're looking forward to that. I've had a lot of calls about that one.
Yes. Yes, I know.
Good, 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 good.
So I won't read, you know, I won't read all these to you. But just highlight the big stuff like that and I'll answer any of your questions. We did get additional funding for our Phase Two improvements to the Dulfield wastewater plant. I guess the biggest news is that we got an ARPA grant of twelve million dollars to help us close the gap in the budget for the Yuma Hilton Sewer. We got that from DEQ last month. So we will be able to proceed. But there are still easement issues, like I said, we need to address. Our crew will be starting on the multi-community extension number two underfunded. At the Sayon Halla, they will be starting on that. That's a DHCD funded part of that project. And then they will be working on that on weekends and then working on Weber City number five during the week. Then we will move on to the next project. We also, we also got a project funded in Tennessee. That's the one that just got ARPA grant funded, small water line extension. And that's their only source of water would be us. It helps the PSA tremendously by eliminating a dead end line at the state line on Yuma Road. Of course, obviously it helps us fifty homes save drinking water where they're drinking water like Hunter's Valley's got. So will be a good source of revenue. And it's the best project I have seen in years. About nine thousand dollars a house. It's just unheard of when we're spending over fifty thousand dollars a home on most other projects to extend water. But several projects funded, like I said, sixty million dollars in funded projects right now. And we're seeking more funds. We appreciate, you did approve that letter of support, I guess, for Central Saffotte 2A. We appreciate that. We are very optimistic that we will get that funding. It's a, it's scaled back from the whole project. But we were, the engineers were able to scale back such a way that most, many of the homes were served. And we still can put in our pump stations and tanks up there on the ridge. Still working on the Phase Two B for the Wind Springs area, trying to get funding for those and then the others. But it's exciting to see what's going on. And, and our folks are working hard from office to the crew to plants and our engineers to make these projects a reality.
You did say Hiltons and Yuma Sewer, Graham's pretty?
We did get that DEQ ARPA grant for about twelve million.
Yeah, that's additional.
We had to have that in there again. It was the, it was the inability to get, it was the failure of the property owners to give us easements in a timely manner that delayed the project. And then it got caught up in inflation and, and then also we didn't have, we were twelve million dollars short. That's how much materials and contractor prices went up over that two or three year period. Now we're just keeping our fingers crossed that the contractor bids come in under, under budget.
And I want to say down through down, even after, you know, going across the road, it was pretty rough and a lot of complaints down through there. Who did the final paving though? Was that?
Well, Thomas was the contractor and they, they did it.
They did the job.
I don't think they subbed it out, but I think they did it. Yeah, it looks good.
It was rough for a while though.
Yeah, yes.
I keep getting questions about the Phase Two of the Fairview project. I think there are two, three houses on Fairview and then seven houses on Beach Grove.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to look at the funding on that. It's very expensive due to the length of line and the low number of homes.
Yeah, I was asked about it yesterday. So any information you have on it, if you just send me an email, I'd really appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments for tradition? Good report. Good news.
If you have any questions or concerns, let me know. I'll try to address them.
All right.
Thank you.
So the folks here from the High Knob Music Festival and they thought they run agenda. And so I thought, and I'll give y'all some instructions, depending on if you want to come on to do your presentation. Maybe so.
Good morning and thank you so much for allowing this to be here and speak with you. I did place a handout in front of you. So it'll tell you everything that I'm going to tell you anyway. I'll try to be brief. My name is Buddy Dell. I'm from Big Stone Gap, Virginia. This is Jane Brannum, Big Stone Gap slash Norton. She's just on the line there. Yes, maybe, no.
Depends on who he is.
At any rate, we, we started the High Knob Festival. Jane and I, actually, we didn't plan this.
No, we were going to practice music one day and we decided to go up to High Knob Recreation Area to see if we could gather a little bit of, you know, interest in something with music because that place was slated.
We had to practice anyway.
It was slated to close and I knew that. And I was like, we can't let this happen. So that's where it was born.
Yeah, so that was in two thousand fourteen. And so that was the same year that we dedicated the High Knob Tower. Some of you may have been there for that dedication or not as much.
Yeah, the county actually put some money in that, in that tower when they rebuilt it. So they did over two year period, like seven thousand, five hundred for two years. Fifteen thousand total is what the county put in back then. So that was a few years ago to rebuild that.
And we, we talked to, what was it, Mr. Herschel at the time that was the Forest Service person? Yeah, and we talked about the festival to him that day, you know, and we'd like to do something to save that place.
So we started, the idea of this festival in two thousand fourteen and two thousand fifteen, the festival idea, we didn't really even have a name yet. We were just called, we were calling it High Knob Music Festival, but just because that's where it was. But so we decided with the town of Norton and Wise County to combine this idea for the festival with the seventy-fifth anniversary of the High Knob Recreation Area opening up. And so in two thousand sixteen, we formed a group of people. I think we have eleven people in our group now, our committee that does this. And it's totally grassroots. We, we together raise money by fundraising. We sell food at events. And, and we're very thankful that Scott County had been so good. You all helped us build that huge, beautiful stage up there. I'm not sure if any of you have been up there and have looked at it or not.
Yeah, I was at the festival a couple of times. Great.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's incredible. It's a, it's a stage that rivals any, anywhere in any town that you go to. And you all helped build that by donating money to us. Plus over the years, you have given us money to actually put the festival on. We're actually, we've been doing this ten years now, Jane and I have. First couple of years, there wasn't really anybody else much in on it. But we've had, this will be our ninth festival, actually. We did not have the festival in twenty twenty because of COVID. And, but at any rate, we, we're here basically to see if you all would help us with the festival this year. I think I'm, I'm the treasurer for the High Knob Music Festival. And I think we've got about seven thousand dollars in the bank right now. And it's going to cost us, in an neighborhood of eleven to twelve thousand, to put the festival on, on June seventeenth of this year, which is just a little bit more than two months away. So we're going to put it on. We have addressed the Wise County Board of Supervisors. We've addressed the town of Big Stone Gap Town Council. We're scheduled to go for the Norton City Town Council on the eighteenth of this month. And so we're confident that we'll reach our goal and get the funding that we have to have. Plus we're, we're fundraising. We're, we're planning to sell food. Partner with one of the barbecue people in Norton. But we're working hard at this all the time and we do need help with, with the finances.
Plus the Fox House, we have a Fox House event as a fundraiser on the twenty-seventh of this month.
So we're working really hard. For a one day festival, we work all year to raise the money to do this.
To make it free.
The festival is a family friendly, no drugs or alcohol free music festival. And we're, we're unique in that we not only allow people to bring food in a cooler if they have kids to the festival, we encourage them to bring their kids in a, in a cooler with sandwiches and drinks and stuff, not alcoholic drinks. But that's because we want people to have a completely free festival in this region. We've, we also try to collect food for the food bank at the festival. We ask people to bring a can of food or something and we get that and take it back to the food bank. So we're working really hard to make this a family friendly, free festival in every aspect. We did have requests after the first year that we had the festival. It was a non-commercial festival. We really couldn't sell anything. We didn't have the permit to do that. And, but what we kept hearing from people is, why don't you have any food? You know, we'd like to buy some, something, odd dollars or whatever. So we do that now. So we fundraise at our own festival as well as Blue Highway Festival in Big Stone Gap. And we're going to be vending at the Fourth of July Festival this year. Those things will be after this, this year, our festival.
Just wanted to mention some of our future goals to improve that place. Because, you know, we built the stage. But our next project in the Forest Service is on board too. They, we wanted to build a handicap observation deck near the stage for wheelchair access because people were loving it. So the Forest Service says, why stop there? Let's make a wheelchair access all the way to the lake. And we're like, great. So it would be like monumental to think for me the first and only handicap access recreation area in the whole area. I think it's big. And so I think, you know, there's a lot of grants out there and I feel sure that we can find some money to help with that. But it's just continuing to have the music festival every year. We need support from the region to keep on making it free and then.
Well, since we're Scott County, we almost have adopted you also.
Oh, yeah.
But it's right off the line that you got Wise County.
And we didn't plan these shirts this morning. I picked them up. I was like, oh my goodness.
Very progress though.
What Jane is referring to is covered on paragraph four there about the, no, actually paragraph five, about the engineering work. We have an engineer who's volunteered his service to have draw up the plans for the observation deck over the stage as well as the handicapped accessible pathway, which their High Knob Recreation Area has to go down and do several switchbacks to keep the grade necessary for ADA compliance. And it won't be much farther than this room, but it has to go, you know, round and around. And the Forest Service did ask us to do a presentation of them about the whole project. Our project originally was just for the handicapped accessible observation deck. And that was going to be a pretty good project just for us. But they wanted it in a package. And so it's, the engineers are working on that now. We've raised fifteen hundred dollars for the handicapped project that we're speaking of now. And, you know, if you all can help us sometime with that, we would appreciate it. We don't have the engineering drawings and have everything approved through the Forest Service yet. So that's, but we're already working on that. And we have, I think, raised fifteen hundred dollars for that. It's, I've got an estimate on paper here. I put down a rough estimate of thirty thousand dollars. I think that's way low, but I don't know what the number is. I didn't want to put something in there that's outrageous. But at any rate, what else we want to cover? Just, we also did the electrical system. In twenty twenty, when everything was locked down, is when we put a brand new electrical system in. Wise County Board of Supervisors paid for that. It was forty-one hundred and almost forty-two hundred dollars and they paid for that, our project. You all helped with the stage. Big Stone Gap helped with the, with the stage. And we raised money for the stage. But we spent, I think, twelve thousand dollars in twenty twenty, our budget for the festival that we couldn't have. We spent that money, whatever we could raise, to do all the improvements and that. And it is beautiful. If you, if you know anyone who wants to get married or have a family picnic or something, that is a gorgeous place to do that.
And by the way, we also do the mowing and everything up there too.
I said the Forest Service appreciates that because they're, they're lacking a man.
They don't have personnel and it's, they've had a hard time too and I know everyone has. But at any rate, we would appreciate your consideration for our request. I don't really want to throw out a number because I know all the boards are kind of confined with their expenditures now.
And you've got a lot of potholes to fix.
Y'all heard that, didn't y'all? I had educated her to that, didn't you? From school kids to follow.
I just wanted to thank y'all for your, your service and your support in the past. So what we do without the support if we.
What we did in the past, I think the last time was a thousand dollars and that's what we did. And so I don't know what the board here might want to do if they want to do it through the budget process or take something from a contingency fund. I don't know. We'll talk about it here in a second when y'all get through.
That would really help us.
That's what we did the last time. I'm not saying that's just a number we did the last time, if I'm memory surfing correctly.
It was.
But we'll see what happens here when we put it to them. But we'll see what happens here when we put it to them.
Is there any other questions or information that you all would like?
Anyone have any question or comments? Last festival, we actually parked at High Shepherale, rode bicycles out there, my two brothers and I. So we rode out, and then we thought we'd get in free, we had to pay 10 bucks to get in anyway, so we didn't sneak in free. But anyway, it was a good festival, and we enjoyed the heck out of it.
And we got shuttle buses running all day long.
Bicycle's the best way to get there.
It is, and y'all come.
Hey, electric, electric bicycle, let me correct that.
It's June 17th.
Electric bicycle. Well, thank y'all so much for being so courteous to us, and we apologize for showing up and.
That's all right, my apologies, I talked to Noah, he talked to me Sunday, and I submitted to your citizens' expression, now she looked at your shirt, I knew, I know who you were, but we got you answered.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any comments from you all, or anything y'all want to do to help the folks with that festival? Now, they are close enough to, to Scott County, like I said, the county did put money into the tower, if they're back when it burned. And that's been several years ago, it's when I first came on the board, when that was happened, actually, the Intercrigis Board voted to do it. So it was over two years, 15,000 over two years, and then we gave money to the festival too, with the building, the stage and everything. So y'all still have your thoughts you might want to do, anyone?
Do you want to do that?
We didn't take our contingency, well, we got, what, 29,000, now I guess our contingency fund, we take the 5,000 out. So, I mean, we're okay if we do anything.
I'm okay, we, we did, you know, was it this last budget we did it, or was it the one before?
One before, I think, I don't think we did anything last year, I don't, I don't think they came, y'all came last year, I don't believe you did.
No, we did not.
Do you want to do a thousand dollars from our contingency fund?
I'll make it in the form of a motion.
I'll say it.
Mr. Tipton made a motion, Mr. Brick is second, any other discussion? I'll probably say an aye. Opposed. I'll have your side.
Do you want that, do you want that check made to the address?
Yes, my information is down almost at the bottom of your page.
Okay.
Let's see, yeah, my address is on our buddy Jim, 26034, down in New York State.
Okay, thanks.
Thank y'all for coming.
Thank you so much.
All right, we don't have anything for closed session, do we? Anybody have anything for closed session? All right, next meeting is May 3rd. Oh, thank you. Any comments?
First, I want to do a shout-out for M&amp;M, that's there in Weber City. They actually live in Hiltons, and that's Fabio, and Mavis. I went in there, and it's, it's really fabulous as to what they're doing, they do upholstery, it can be automobiles, it can be furniture, and things of that nature, and they're specialists in this, and I was just intrigued by an automobile that was sitting in there, and I, he said, that's not mine, it was really nice, it was really super nice. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time. I would like for you all to give consideration, we're trying to refurbish the Veterans Memorial, and so we are also in the fundraising process, I'm the commander of the American Legion post, and we've had our meeting, and so it was determined we would need around $10,000 to do this project. Our veterans do a great deal of, you know, for the community, they give back, we do fundraisers, and we give back to the community for youth, boy scouts, baseball teams, and things of that nature. And so, we're looking at potential donors, we're looking at a variety of avenues to, to help. And, and, and I think the county's probably helped with the honor guard, I think one time before, I think Frank Taylor maybe came down and did a presentation, and so he's part of our group, you know, as well. So, if you can work that into your budget process, you don't have to decide anything like that today, so if I could be taken up, maybe enough budget processes to, maybe you could do. If I'm not mistaken, that property belongs to the county?
It does, it does, under the county.
So.
Where the tank is over there on the.
So we're, we're wanting to try to do something that's, that's nice, those wheels are really rusted on it, it's going to take a great deal of sandblasting, and, you know, for somebody to come on site to do that, it's going to be costly. Or if you take the wheels off, if you replace the wheels, they're like $700 apiece, and there are six on each side. So we're trying to hash out, you know, which is, you know, actually the best avenue to go. And of course, that's a pretty ancient tank, but we want to do something that will look nice for, not just next year or the year after, but, you know, in, in years to come. And appreciation for all of our veterans, you know, that have served, and are currently serving. Lastly, I would just like to say that we didn't, this is a great board, I, I enjoy, I enjoy serving with you. I want to thank the staff, you know, for what they do, and the board for what they do. I think it's really unprecedented as far, as far as any board that I can think of, with what we have gone through, and our citizens, but our board, as to what we've had to juggle around. You know, we didn't ask for the real estate market boom, we didn't ask for the increase on personal property on vehicle automobiles. We didn't ask for the COVID-19, we didn't ask for the two equalization boards, there's a lot of things we didn't ask for, but it was on our plate. And it's all of us here that made this happen, yeah. And, as you know, we felt like we needed to do something in terms of helping our citizens, and we did a, and some people don't realize this, but we did a, a decrease, you know, from the 80 cents per 100 on the real estate, we went to 77 cents. My understanding is, a couple, three weeks ago, correct me if I'm wrong, Fred, that the increase that was on the automobiles for last year, then it will not be in the 24 budget, is that correct? The increase.
The values have dropped, I don't know, they're not back to the original value.
Right, but they have dropped.
But that'll be $550,000 tax dollars that won't be in next year's budget.
Got you, okay, I'll have to remember that figure, okay. So that's important, so that's giving something back to the citizens, and just pray for us as we try to juggle, when we get through this, and it's been a trying time, what we have went through, and what we are going through, and all of, all of you, myself included, and you out there, we love Scott County. And, and it was just great meeting today with all the presentations that we have, just seeing things coming back to some sort of normal, and I think that's great, and I think that's all I really have.
Mr. Herron?
Appreciate what everybody does, appreciate the kids from Twin Springs coming down, they did a great job. Hopefully that'll be the beginning of something that they can grow on, that the other schools might be able to learn from that. But the road situation, I know that's usually all I talk about, but, you know, I'm, I'm thankful for the people who do, do come, you know, sometimes some of them call me, and they, they apologize, and I say, do not apologize. You know, it's your, it's your right to do that, but it's, you know, that's, that's what gets things done, is, you know, she was talking about the squeaky wheel gets the grease, so there's a lot of truth to that. You know, but I did mention something about sending another letter, the gentleman talked about it, can't remember his name, and maybe inviting them down here again, we've done that before, I think we've sent two or three letters, but it wouldn't hurt to send another one, if, do I need to put that in a motion? So I'd, I'd like to make the motion that we send another letter inviting, we, I think we need to send it to Terry Kewell, Oregon, Todd Peien, and the governor. And, you know, there's been some question about our senators, you know, about this, the money, and Mike explained that maybe a little bit. But evidently, they were telling the citizens that this money was going to come to them, you know, and that was a direct lie. If, if, if that's so, you know, and.
Well, it's good if you're a politician, it's great.
It does, yeah. But could, could we include those two too, and have an explanation of where that, what that money is going to be, I mean.
I don't have that letter, if somebody can send it to me. Are you talking about the letter, like, you were talking about it, Lena Whiskow maybe?
Duane Miller would have it, yes.
I don't have that letter.
Well, maybe we can work on that.
Because I get everything from the senators.
Okay, could, could we just send them, just from us?
Explain what about money?
Yeah, yeah, and have, have them explain money.
We put that form of the motion.
I put that in form of the motion.
You have a second?
I'll say it.
All right, second, I'll probably say an aye.
But, I appreciate what everybody does. Again, VDoc situations, I've had some calls about the low-water bridge, bridges, we was actually talking about that the other day at one of our meetings, and, you know, I did get in contact with them, there is tons, hundreds of tons of gravel that is washing up against those bridges, and those things are acting like a dam, and of course, it's clogging up. There's, the one on Ponderosa Road was the one I got the call about, I did get in contact with, can't remember his name, but anyway. They, they are supposed to look at that and try to, try to do something. There's two more on Wayside Meadows, doing the exact same thing, and if there are other low-water bridges, I'm sure they're all doing the same thing. And the Gate Road, I did mention that to them too, they're supposed to be fixing it, there was a ditch on it that, like I said, my truck would drag. It was pretty bad, but, but all, all of our roads in the county, even in our surrounding counties, you know, I mean, this end of Virginia seems like is, you know, on our road situations being overlooked, I think, so, but that's all I've got, I appreciate it.
Thanks, sir, Mr. Brick.
I've decided I'm not going to tell people that our taxes went down three cents. I figured it up, it's, it's 3.75% decrease that it's going to, going to go down. I think 3.75 sounds about three cents.
It does.
It is, I figured, you know, 80, 80, and then divided it in three. I've been, I went, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just.
I like your math.
I do too, I like your numbers, that sounds better.
You can tell he's a school, you know, a principal in school, so it's coming out, you know.
I, I drove around one day this week, or over the weekend, trying to see our new holding trailer, and it is out there. You can't, you can't get out there where they're placing it, but if you go down by the street out there where the marijuana shop is, you can see it through there, or back down Jackson, you can see it from Jackson up by the old, old library there. And, and that's, that's going to be pretty good, it'll be red wine. And Deputy Thacker, you heard like we did about the sewer down in you, must spread the word, okay?
I'll be sure to let her know.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
So I'm going to get some concrete.
And, and Roger, Jeremy, you're exactly right, our road problem starts in Richmond.
Yes.
That's where the problem is, and we've got to get some attention if our, our meeting, I thought, I thought we had a good meeting. And, but that lady did say that they had a machine coming to put, to, to put new culverts in, and they sent it back because of polywogs or things they were going to kill, she said they sent it back, you all heard that too?
I know.
And when I mentioned it to the guy last month, I kind of felt silly, because he'd never heard of it. Of course, he's new down here, but I just wish we could get some things down on the roads all over the county.
I, I, I don't get that, Mike, you know.
3.75?
No, 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 I'm talking about, you know, polywogs and stuff like that, you know, I mean, you have.
Oh, oh, I know.
That are supposed to be cleaned out, you know, routinely, and.
She said there are environmental engineers or something, when we met with them, had decided to send it back.
Joe, the part I don't understand, I don't mean to butt in, but, you know, the EPA have, has all these restrictions. What about the runoff from these gravel roads that's destroying land, it's running off? When I was talking about the gravel that's, that's washed up against these low-water bridges, if you look at it, it's not natural creek gravel, it's gravel from these roads. And why, why are they allowed to let that runoff run into our creeks if they're, if they're so important, if they have so much emphasis to put on the environment, to me, that's worse than anything, I agree.
You should see how many rock have washed down in, and it's on Midway Road, where Gabe's Farm is.
Oh, yeah.
Down through there.
Tons, or.
I mean, those.
Thousands of tons.
Thousands, yeah, I mean, it's multiple.
Did you get it back and reuse it?
Well, I mean, and he could, I mean, he really could.
I know exactly where you're talking about.
I mean, it's unbelievable, how many times.
Five or six different places, as far as you can see.
Yep.
It's wooded area is just gravel, and if somebody, the landowner, if they would want to come in there and cut the timber and make that into pipe strip, it'd be impossible, because there's thousands of tons of gravel on private property, and to me, that's a destruction, and it's a bad, bad deal.
All right, Mr. Brick?
No, that's all.
Ms. Hood?
I think we had a productive meeting today, and I still get calls, people wanting water and clean air, people who live on dirt roads, they want pavement done, so that's primarily what I do, is talk with people on dirt roads, pave and getting some clean water.
All right. Ms. Edith?
Yes, first thing, I want to thank all of the staff here for everything that they do, and they, it's amazing what you, what you all are, what you all are doing, to know what goes on behind the scenes before these meetings and everything, and to get us where we are. I am going to go out on a limb here, though, I do want to address something that I have recently seen. And I really appreciate the folks that, and the students from Twin Springs, it's so critical, and it's so important to be involved. And I want to say this to the parents that are watching this, and, you know, to all of us, it's extremely important to pay attention to what's going on around us. Without saying, I'm going to say, the, the issues that we see on the news that are occurring in other counties and other school systems with different agendas and things of that nature, which this board has no control over, and I realize that, and I am saying this as a citizen. But I have seen things posted on social media that have really, really, really disturbed me. And it has been some of our school teachers that have posted things that they would allow into their classrooms. So my, 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 I guess my, I have to say something, this is my platform, this is them, I'm not going to get out and blare it on Facebook and point things out on Facebook, but I do want to say, it's, it's, it's so important that the parents, you get involved with these school boards, and you know what's going on in your schools, and you know what's going on in your libraries, and you know what's going on in your, with your kids' education and what they're being taught, it, it's imperative. And I don't have children, but I have a niece and a nephew that I would go to the end of the earth for. And it, it's just weighing heavy on my heart that I have to say something, to say something about it. I just want to encourage everybody, you know, if you, do you know what books are in your kids' libraries? Do you know what those are, do you know what they're being taught, do you know what those, you know, those, those types of things are? I, I was just really disturbed by a Facebook post from a, from a current employee. And it is, like I said, it has weighed heavy on my heart to say something, and and I don't know what else to say, if anybody else has anything they want to add to that, feel free, but now, like I said, this is, you know, it was, it was a very personal thing for me, and I, I had to say something, so. And like I said, I was not going to blare it on Facebook, or Instagram, or something like that, because that. And like I said, I was not going to blare it on Facebook or Instagram or something like that because that, that's not how you win things like this, so.
Stephanie, I applaud you for saying that and speaking out publicly about it because it's very important. It's very concerning. And I think you hit it spot on, and it should be very concerning to each one of us and each one of you out there. And it falls back to the parents, and knowing and being involved.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. That's what I'm saying, just.
All right, we're down to the end. I don't have anything. Thank the staff. Appreciate those kids coming, and everybody coming to speak. Thank all of you for what you do. And next meeting, May the third. We'll be back here at eight-thirty on Wednesday morning. A lot between now and then with the budget committee meetings and everything else going on. So, if you can't go to that thing on the, on the High Knob, Fred is going to drive up there if you don't know. Where to go, I think Selma said she would want to go with her to that side of the truck. Thanks, so. Pardon? Yeah, I said, before we went that time out. All right, nothing else? Meeting is your bye, Jerry.